Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November 1st, 2016. We actually are coming out of a closed session that we had earlier. I'll ask our deputy attorney to let us know if there's any reportable action.
No, Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and call to order our regular meeting, and I invite roll call, please.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mueller?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And I invite one of our -- we have several special guests here tonight, but Congressman Mike Thompson, I invite you to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And in just a moment, you'll all know why Congressman Thompson is here. But next up, we are adopting tonight's agenda. I don't believe we have any changes, so is there action on the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we now come to this spot in our agenda where I invite Congressman Thompson to come forward. He has a very special presentation for a very special person tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. This is a very special evening. One of the neatest things that I get to do as a member of Congress is present medals, military medals, to veterans who, for whatever reason, didn't get medals when they should have received them. And tonight is one of those days. Jeff Spratt is here. Maybe I could ask Jeff to come up?
Yes.
Jeff served in Vietnam. He was a buck sergeant, E-5?
Yes.
With the First Infantry Division. And when he was there, he received the Bronze Star. And he never got the Bronze Star. So it's my great honor tonight to be able to present him with that award. And Jeff, I'm going to pin it on you. He said, "We should just do a little handshake photo op." I said, "No, Bronze Star's a big deal." It's a -- I'll try not to stick you there.
Okay. I'll bleed easy.
Yeah, please, with the glasses.
What about a corsage? Might be easier to put on if it was.
Wow.
Jeff, thank you. And I just want everyone to know that the Bronze Star is not some just run-of-the-mill medal. It's a big deal. And to be able to get this, you did some very heroic actions in Vietnam. And being a Vietnam combat veteran myself, thank you for your service. Welcome home, and it's an honor to be on the podium with you.
Thank you.
And I just want to say one other thing. And that is that it's one thing to say, "I have this medal coming. Would you get it for me?" In this case, what Jeff said was, "I want to do it at the town council meeting, not for me, but so other people know that if they have medals coming, they too can figure out how to get them. And if you can't, you know, we can help you do it." In this case, the veteran service officer for Napa County, Patrick Jolly, was a big help.
Tremendous.
As I understand, you had trouble getting your DD-214 form?
Correct.
And he sprung into action. And Jeff said, "You know, we ought to do something to recognize Patrick Jolly as well."
Absolutely.
And I agree with you 100 percent. Because, as I said, I'm a combat veteran from Vietnam, and I carry some disability. And Patrick has helped me a couple of times.
He's helped me as well.
So I have, at your request and my concurrence, a certificate of special congressional recognition for Patrick to thank him for all that he does for so many veterans here in our county.
Wow.
Now, he can't be here, but his right-hand guy, Ryan Labarre, is here. And I'm going to present this to Ryan, and he can take it back and give it to Patrick. Ryan?
Also -- Ryan's also a combat veteran and earned his chops in my office, so.
Thank you, Congressman, very much. Also, Mr. Spratt, thank you very much on behalf of not only the town council, but our entire community and a very grateful nation. And thank you also, even though you did not introduce your wife, we know that she's here.
I wanted to.
Please, actually, please come up to the podium and be recognized with your husband.
Forty-six.
Maybe we should put that man longer. That's where it belongs. Now, she's fantastic. I mean, to find somebody who will stand by you through thick and thin, you know, and what I went through and a lot of veterans is quite a character, you know? Besides being a wife, I mean, it takes a lot, you know? Because we have a lot of issues as a result.
This means a lot. Thank you so much.
So much.
It's our pleasure.
It's good stuff.
Come on, Park and Recs team, you're killing me over there. You cutting garlic over there or what's happening?
I'm glad you're in my department.
Thank you again, Mr. and Mrs. Spratt, very much. It's our pleasure to recognize you tonight. Sometimes that's very satisfying. This is one of those times. Next up, anybody want to follow that with public comment? I dare you. Okay, Chris Patricia.
All right.
Don't even try, but.
That's a very tough act to follow.
It really is. It is good news, not as wonderful as that. But I'm Patricia Moskowitz. I'm the GM up at Lincoln Theater here in Yountville, and I'm very happy to announce that we are donating the remaining amount needed to complete the mural project fund. It's now fully funded.
I think maybe Samantha can take that.
I'm Kristin Natale, the Foundation Director. We're so very excited to do this. We see the mural as a bridge between the great art offerings of the town to the great arts institutions on the other side of the freeway. And we look forward to the mural being there and bringing people to enjoy all the great offerings that Yountville has to offer.
Wonderful.
Thank you. That's a pretty good follow-up, I will say.
Yeah, you did it. You nailed it.
Okay, I'm sure there's no one else that's going to try to come up now. But you're welcome to.
Only good news.
All right. Seeing no other public comment, we'll move on. Next up is our consent calendar. We have, let's see, what do we have? We have four items on that consent calendar. Are there any action to be had on the consent calendar?
Make a motion that we approve and accept the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimously accepted. Thank you very much. Okay, if you've all gotten back together over there, our Parks and Recreation team is here to present our summer activities report for 2016.
Samantha, are we starting over here? Yes, you're starting with me. Thank you. I'm in the different seat this evening, just for a minute. So it is an exciting time every year when we get to come to the council after what we typically think of as our busy season, but in the last couple of months, I think we feel like we're always busy, which is a great thing. But we see the greatest number of people come through and use our services and programs in parks during the summer months. And we call the summer May through Labor Day, basically. And that's really when we start in May with training our staff, but it really backs up way further. Typically, in January, February is when we start really honing in on our summer programs that we're going to offer, whether it's at the community pool, or our summer day camps, or our programs at the community center. And we also gear up for the special events that come through town, as well as the increased users in our parks and facilities. So I'm here tonight with my amazing team, and they're each going to come up and talk about their specific area of expertise. And I'll chime in as needed and help to answer any questions. But before we start with them, I just wanted to really point out that -- I'm using the doodad.
Do you want to go next?
Yeah. This doesn't do it. Okay. I'll just do it like that. So this summer, your Parks and Recreation Department had over 15,000 patrons come through in our programs, classes at the pool, and at events in reserved park sites. So those are all people that we can actually count. So for example, when someone reserves a park site, we ask them their estimated attendance and that type of thing. So we keep track of those numbers. It's a pretty impressive number for May through September when you look at it like that. I can just do it like this, it's okay. We also employed 38 part-time staff this summer. We worked with over 15 community partners and sponsors, and we had the assistance of 30 volunteers through all of our programs. So as I start to introduce my staff, I just want to say, you know, I continue to feel such great pride in what we're doing here in Yountville, and that is, of course, because of the support of the town council and Steve and our residents here. I kind of feel like we've hit this amazing sweet spot right now, and we're getting a lot of great feedback from our residents and seeing increased utilization from the people who live here in town. And of course, that's first and foremost. Our goal is to serve our residents here in Yountville. But we couldn't do that without encouraging non-residents to also come and utilize our services. It really makes it viable because Yountville is a small community. But some of the things that we're doing that are new and trying, like the Golden Ticket program, we're seeing about 90 percent resident utilization in some of those programs, which is really fantastic, so. So first up, I'm going to invite Ms. Carol Rasmussen. As you guys know, Carol is our recreation coordinator who works here for the town for over 10 years now. And Carol oversees our after-school programs, as well as our Summer Camp Wyville program and some of our special events. And she runs circles around our, you know, 18, 19, 20-year-old staff, so. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Mayor Dunbar and council members, thank you for having me here this evening. Alrighty, so here we are, Camp Wyville. This year, animal discovery, which brought on a lot of fun activities.
Next.
Okay.
You can say next.
Okay, so it looks like we had 497 registrations for our summer camps with average 62 campers a week. That's a lot, a lot of fun. 177 were residents, which was really cool, with 320 coming from the local areas, which is super cool. Alrighty. And this is always a winner, when you can reach your cost recovery. Love it. Super cool. All right, and this brings you to my little report I got going here. So this year, animal discovery. What we did was, each week, we took on a different animal, a different activity. So our first week, we took on the big cats and the king of the jungle with our first field trip to this Oakland Zoo. Oakland Zoo! It was so much fun to see the animals up close. The campers just loved it. Week two, we snuggled with our stuffed bears and learned how bears survived in the wilderness, and we even had a teddy bear picnic at the park. Our second-week field trip was to Santa Rosa Children's Museum and the Charles Schultz Ice Rink for the afternoon of ice skating when it was over 90 degrees outside, so they love that. Week three, we took on puppies and kittens. The campers learned about how to take care of their pets at home, which is really cool. We went to the Sassoon Wildlife Center and learned all about the birds and their habitats. It was so cool. And then we went to the Jump Highway in Cordelia. Then, week four, my personal favorite, it was the week of the monkey, and I was able to find a guy in Napa that had a huge baboon. He brought it to the community center with some little smaller monkeys. He brought in a pig and an alligator and even a parrot that talked to us. So it was huge fun. We all got a chance to have our picture taken with this giant monkey. Yeah, it's crazy. But anyway, and then, of course, week four, we get to go to Six Flags, which is our favorite of the summer. Week five, we talked about the birds. We learned how they fly and why they go south for the winter. Our first, our field trip with Jelly Belly, and then we went to the Allen Witt Swim Center. So we got them all sugared up, and then we took them to the pool and we swam it off. Perfect. Another camp favorite was snakes and reptiles. And I had Reptile Joe come, and he brought all of his amazing collection of snakes, lizards, and giant turtles. For our field trip this week, our staff and favorite was Spring Lake in Santa Rosa. We went there this year for the -- and they have a new blow-up thing on their water there, and it was super cool. Week seven, we took on, we looked at hamsters, rats, and rodents. And we even put together an obstacle racetrack for our little pet hamsters in the classroom. Super fun. So each kid made banners and rooted for their favorite hamster to win, so that was really cool. And on our last week of camp, we took on chickens and ducks with feather paintings and egg delicious treats. So we ended the summer with two giant jump houses in the gym, along with pizza and soft-serve ice cream. So this year, I put a lot of emphasis on the academic levels of our campers. After talking with parents and teachers, we developed a summer reading and math programs for our campers. The school loaned us small Chromebook computers with programs that help maintain the academic levels for these students as they head into their next grade of school. We put together camp money, and I brought a sample here, Carol bucks. Huge, successful. The kids were able to earn these Carol bucks when they achieved goals and they passed their levels in their reading and the math levels. And on Fridays, we had a camp store where we had some donated toys and fun things for them. Huge fun. And so, super cool. Then, this summer, we also continued our programs with the Veterans Home. We did ceramics at the Creative Arts Center. We helped with the bingo and our ongoing visits each week to the memory care center there with the Veterans Home. Again, this was over-the-top exciting for the campers as well as the residents up there. And then, it just makes you feel so good. And the conversations about just random crazy things that they would talk about, the campers and the residents, it was just so cool. I don't know who enjoyed it more, the residents or the campers. I loved those visits, and I never missed a one the whole summer because it was just so cool to see that interaction with the different generations. Our summer reading program continued with the Napa Library, our Yountville Library here. Huge success always. We encourage our campers to read during the summer and reward them at the end of the summer with a success. And the library puts on a huge celebration for us at the end of the summer, so super exciting. And of course, our weekly visits to the Yountville Pool and the fabulous Yountville Park is the highlight for our summer. Are you making fun of me? Yes. So what did parents like best? I had an amazing summer staff this year. I hired some of the most awesome people, kids. We had some, all kinds of people working for us this summer. Our field trips are always huge, busy days, and they love the scheduling flexibility that we allow, which is super cool. And what did the campers like? Field trips, visiting the Veterans Home, the pool, me? Oh. The counselors and fuse beads. And if you don't know what fuse beads are, those are the hit of camp. They're the little beads you put on a tray and you iron them. Huge. Super fun. So, survey says, and I did read this, everybody loved our camp, and everybody loved the staff, and we had just an amazing summer. And I'm excited about next year. We're possibly talking about going under the sea next year, so that opens a whole new window of opportunity for us. And do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I'm not following that.
Are you exhausted yet?
I'm super cool exhausted.
You know what? And I would --
It's great.
I would love to invite you anytime to come over and join in the activities. We would love to have you. There's just so much energy and excitement going on. The kids love our program. And even as kids transfer out of our school and go to other schools and other areas, you can bet they come back for camps, which is awesome because we do offer a lot of really amazing things. And I think it's the staff and it's the combination of this community that make our program the best.
And I noticed in your staff report that you have some of the breakdowns in your expenses and revenues, if we want to look more specifically at how you get to that magic 103 percent.
Absolutely. And you have to remember, last year was a nine-week camp, so that's why those little differences there. This year, it was only an eight-week camp again, which, thank you. Eight weeks is enough energy.
I didn't think you ever ran out of energy.
I think we needed a ninth week with you.
Yeah. Anyway, if you have any questions, you can talk to me later or come on over anytime, and I'd love to share some fun with you.
Thank you very much, Carol.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know why, I should put her last, right? No, you got to follow that.
Yeah.
Up next, we have Lisa Tyler. And Lisa has been here with the town over 15 years, correct? Yes. And Lisa is our facilities manager, so she oversees the community center and also the seasonal pool at the Veterans Home. So she's going to talk to us about the aquatics programs.
All right. I know that's a hard act to follow. I'm going to mellow it down a little bit now. So the Yountville Community Pool opened on Saturday, June 11th this year. Our schedule remains the same. We did our senior veteran and lap swim Tuesday through Friday and on Sundays from 10 to noon. We had our community swim hours Tuesday through Sunday from 12 to 4:00. This year, we combined our resident and family pass night swim. We combined it and started it on Saturday and Sunday nights from 4:00 to 6:00 to give our residents and family pass people a little bit more time to swim at the pool. We were open 65 days this season, and we had 48.5 hours per week of programming. Staffing this year, we employed 18 young adults this summer, the majority being lifeguards and five were pool attendants. Staff recruitment was a challenge this summer. We partnered with the Napa Parks and Recreation Department to offer a lifeguard training class, which helped us gain four new lifeguards for this new program that we did. So we sponsored them through the program and got them certified, and then they came and worked for us up at the pool. We were able to rely on nine returning staff from the previous summer to help us with experience and continuity at our pool. And Ashley Houghton was hired as our new pool manager. She has worked at the pool for the past five summers, working her way up from lifeguard to senior guard to assistant manager, and she did an exceptional job this year. So our community swim time, again, was very popular. We had some very warm days, as well as some heat waves, which kept the pool very busy. We served 8,166 people during the community swim time. Just to note that when looking at participation numbers from 2015, the Napa Unified School District, as Carol mentioned, had one additional week of summer, which contributed to the rise in those numbers in 2015. Our senior veteran swim had 510 participants, which is a decrease of about 195 participants from 2015. I attribute this fact to that we were not able to staff our senior veteran swim after the school session started this year as we were in 2015. So they lost some days of swimming, but we did, we were able to offer it on Saturday and Sunday mornings from 10 to noon, so they did have some swim time through the remaining end of summer till Labor Day. Next. So our swim lessons, again, we offered four sessions through the summer. The prices stayed the same. They were $50 for residents and 56 for non-residents. Our highest enrollment came in session two and then in session number one. And some of our most popular classes were the tadpole, which is the youngest group that we teach swim lessons to, followed by the guppy. And then our stingray dolphin classes were the next most popular. Our major time slots that were always full and people had a waiting list for were our 5:20 and our 5:45 time slots. They were in great demand. Total enrollment for group swim lessons was 323 children, which is a decrease of 105 participants. Part of the decrease in the number of swim lesson participants can be attributed to some of our staffing levels. This was a major transition year for us with new staff coming in, and we had less staff available sometimes during some of our swim lesson hours, so we had to limit the amount of students we could accept in each session for safety purposes. So our total revenue for group swim lessons came to 13,500. We also offered private swim lessons again this year on Friday mornings and Saturday mornings. We had 74 students signed up as compared to 94 last summer with a revenue of $2,014. So on our pool summary, as you can see, entrance fees came to $20,062. Our family, couple, and individual passes, we sold a total of 55 passes, generating $9,323. Snack bar concessions were $5,008.18, and our swim lesson total revenue came to $15,514, which includes both group and private swim lessons. We were again able to offer a junior lifeguard class this year. Last summer, we weren't able to because of low participation. But we had 11 students sign up for the class. Their ages were anywhere from 11 to 15 years of age. And they take the course. They learn all about CPR and lifeguard training skills. They shadow guard our guards and have a good time. And then we give them a certificate at the end. And we had a really good turnout with people coming back and taking the course numerous times. And our goal is to encourage them to become lifeguards when they turn age 15 and take the course and then work for us at the pool, which we've had some good results in that. So our revenue for that was $8.25. We also had a real high request for birthday parties this year at the pool, so we increased our party fee to $100, which allowed them 20 guests for the four-hour time slot during community swim time. And we gave them a shaded area up front with some picnic tables. So our total revenue for both camps that came to the pool, as well as the birthday parties, was $5,271, and this was an increase of $1,137 from 2015. So total revenue for the 2016 swim season was $57,373. This is a decrease from 2015, but can be attributed to one less week of pool operation, along with two sessions of swim lessons that we had to decrease the number of students due to our staffing levels. And then our expenses, total expenses for the summer came to $107,720, which is a $12,142 increase over 2015. We did see an increase in our pool chemicals, as well as an unanticipated expense for a pool pump repair. We also had an anticipated cost for some pool mats, so we had to position all around the pool due to the resurfacing project we had done, which made some slippery spots. So for liability purposes and safety purposes, we decided to mat the pool. And it worked out really good because it actually kept the deck cooler for the kids to walk on and kept them safe. So to conclude, some recommendations for next year. To continue to work on recruitment strategies and train new lifeguards and swim instructors, offer resident-family swim on Sundays only, to utilize Saturday after community swim hours for some more training for staff, because it gets very difficult when staff is working from 10 to 7 o'clock at night and working six days a week to find enough time to get them to do additional training to keep them up on their skill levels. So due to the fact that we didn't have still high participation by moving these resident and family swim night to two nights a week and talking to the pool manager, I think this might be a good area for them to be doing some training on Saturdays as well, right after they get done with community swim. And last, but not least, analyze staffing levels and patterns to ensure our efficiency. Any questions?
Questions? Yes, Councilmember Doran Becker?
Well, I just wanted to say that I was happy to see in the report and in the news from the director that your goal is to create a year-round program to educate young adults to become lifeguards. And I think that will also help to encourage, you know, some of the teenage years, people getting involved. And I think that's really great, so.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing that happen.
Yes, other questions? You touched on the very end there what I was going to ask you about, which was that time period and how successful or not it was for that 4 to 6. And it makes total sense what you're saying. You're already taxing your staff pretty significantly and then to at least give them a window that's not being totally utilized. But it was just a few years ago we made that change to add those hours, if I remember correctly, at some request of local residents.
Well, we, for the last past years, we had resident swim on Saturday nights from that timeframe, and then we did family pass swim on Sunday nights. It was an incentive for people who bought the family pass to have a special night at the pool after community swim time. This year... This year, because of the levels we were seeing in the amount of, we decided to combine them a little bit and see if we could entice more people to come out to both those nights. And we had a good turnout, but we didn't have the best. And I think for staffing purposes, it would be best to try to keep it to one night and then be able to use that for training purposes.
Good. And I think every year we're going to be talking about lifeguards.
Yes.
And when they go back to school, we just don't have enough people to fill in.
Yeah, it's, it's countywide. It's not just us. It's, it's everywhere. San Francisco, I go to lifeguard training classes through CPRS. And everybody's struggling, even pools that are seasonal and full-time pools are having a hard time getting people to get lifeguards as well as get them to work the amount of hours they need them to work. And that's one of the challenges because they're going to school and everything. So it will be a struggle, but I think we can survive this and keep pushing.
That's right. Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks Lisa.
So next up is Jennifer Carvallo. She is over 30 years here, I think, right Jen, with the town? She was only six years old when she's, no, I'm kidding. Jen, Jen is our recreation supervisor and she's in charge of the majority of the programming that goes on at the community center and then also some special events. So she has pretty much the most diverse program load that, that she oversees. But she's going to touch on a couple of things here tonight that are mainly things that she works on in the summer. So, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here this evening. It's fun to be here with our team and our amazing director too. So she gives us a lot of admiration and equally we have it for her. So I just want to make sure you know that without her leadership, we wouldn't be as strong as a team as well. Our specialty summer camp programs this year, we actually partnered with the three, National Academy Athletics, Playwell Technologies and Friends of Scientology. Those three partners have been consistent through the last few summers and have proven, as you can see, when there's some numbers that are low in the different weeks, junior sports and robotics and such, they still believe in community. And they still have that heart of knowing that Yountville deserves to have programs as well. So we really appreciate those partnerships with them. We found that those numbers are decreasing through the few years because our partner cities are actually offering some of the similar programs. So we're going to be looking at whether which camps and talking to them, like maybe we'll just offer the robotics and maybe Napa will offer the junior baseball or such like that. So we're going to be talking more intimately with them about those discussions for future. We were increased in some areas with different camps. As you can see, the Jedi Master seems to be the really happy, popular one. So again, talking with our sister cities, we'll see where we can do with that. Neighborhood, excuse me. Moving along, we had our first teen pool party to kick off the summer. We weren't sure how that would go. We had a few extra dollars, not extra, but remaining dollars in the budget. So we threw it in and we found it was very successful. We had a local resident, Jesus Figueroa, who actually won a Kindle from the Friends of the Library. He showed up on my doorstep and said, Jen, can I donate this? And I said, well, sure you can. It was 8 o'clock in the evening, a little knock at my door. And I said, we have a pool party this weekend and I've been looking for something to do with the kids that would be kind of spectacular. So we went down to the bank and got a bunch of quarters and marked one of the quarters with a K for the Kindle, threw them in the pool. The kids got to dive and look for all the quarters. And as you can see, Derek Westbury, who was a former resident of ours, who's coming back actually at the end of this month, won it. And it was a pretty fun night and a pretty special, full circle, kind of the Friends of the Library to resident, to back to the kids. So, you know, that's what Yountville's about. Excursions. So our excursions continue to grow and be very popular amongst the residents. We find that supporting the local Giants game, you know, is always a good time. They get, they drop you off right there in front and you have a little vino and beer on the way with your Cracker Jacks and peanuts and enjoy a trip there. It takes the hassle out of driving and looking for parking as well as you find intergenerational opportunities. You find, you know, a local teen meets an adult that they might not have known. And, you know, partnering with our cities has also been a great, successful with the Sausalito trip. We had a local resident say, hey, you know, we have great art festivals here. Why don't we try one out of town? So we went and it was huge. And we had the full bus, 55 of them on the bus. A little scary for me, but we, we got them all back on the bus because, you know, after they start drinking.
You brought back 55?
Exactly. 56 with me. No, I'm just kidding. But getting on the bus and, you know, after, after they enjoy the day there and coming back. I can't tell you how many residents just applaud and are so grateful to have that nice relaxing trip back on the bus. And if you haven't done it, I encourage you to try it because it really is a fun time. And the seats aren't too bad, huh Joe? So we have a 65% resident participation, which is huge. The numbers continue, like I said, to grow and we look forward to the next session coming up. We're going to go to see Luzia. We're going to go to Charles Sorensen Museum as well and some other trips coming up. So I encourage you to try to come. Movies in the Park. We continue to solicit for donations for this program because it is such a popular program. Again, intergenerational, people getting out in their lawn chairs, watching a movie in the park. There's nothing more special than that. Your kids get to run around, listen to music. It's a special evening if you've never been to one. We estimated 1,500 people in attendance. The sponsorship program continues to grow. It's nice to see people contributing. We really appreciate, every donation helps offset the cost for these because licensing fees can be kind of expensive. But then we want to stay within, the largest camp out yet. We found that moving the resident bash a week before and then having them moving on another night really helped people not have to kind of pick and choose events. And we found, you know, that was successful for us as well because it kind of gave us a week to get back up and have another event the week after. Carol's Camp Out. Everybody wants to camp with Carol. She does smores and she does quesadillas the next morning. So that's one we co, it is a fun, you have fun with Carol. If you didn't get that from the first part of this presentation, camp out with Carol. What can you do? So other than that, those are the programs I oversee, along with leisure programs during the summer. Those are included in those numbers. So we have a good time here at Parks and Rec and we want to continue providing great programs for the community.
Thank you. Any questions or comment?
Just, you know, you grew up here. You know what this town was like and is like. And I'm just so happy that you're a part of this great team. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I also look forward to your creativity next year with our new Veterans Memorial Park and some of the new features that are going to be available there for you to get even more creative.
We're excited.
Yes.
Thank you Jen.
Thank you.
So before Stacy talks, but you can come up. It's okay. So quickly, she's excited to be here. I just wanted to touch on music in the park. That's one of the areas that I, that I continue to oversee. So this summer we had four concerts in the Veterans Memorial Park. We did move the time later. We started at 5 o'clock and we had a featured food truck each Sunday. And it was a really exciting summer, I feel like, for that program. And I saw many of you out there. But I think we were at least 200, some nights maybe more people in attendance, which was terrific. You know, last summer I was getting a little bummed out with the 15 to 20 crowd. So having over 200 people and, and people just really raving and we're going to continue that next summer. Been talking, I think they already left, but with the Lincoln Theater to do some partnership.
Still back there.
There's Tricia. Working with them to do some partnerships out there, hopefully increase the number of concerts and get either some grant funding or sponsorships behind that is the goal. So we'll be back next summer in the beautiful park that Joe's teams worked on and have, not just music, but we're looking at some diverse programming out there. So. The other thing I'll talk about quickly is the Second Annual Residence Bash. So in August, we did it again, which was very exciting. I know there was a little nervousness about charging, so we did initiate the $10 fee, just really for people to commit or not. We had over 300 people attend and pay the fee. And, you know, again, nothing but amazing, you know, reviews from that. So, and people laugh because I say it's like Christmas morning to me because it really is. Like you walk around and everyone's smiling and people are so thankful and excited to be there. And it really, for us, for me, for Parks and Recreation, it feels like Christmas because that is like the epitome of what we're here to do. So, and we'll continue that on every August, which is very exciting. So I'm going to have Stacy come up now. So Stacy Diaz, she is our administrative assistant in our department. She is the glue that keeps us all together. And so one of the things Stacy oversees are park and bocce court reservations all year round amongst a lot of other duties. So she's just going to talk briefly about our park rentals this summer.
Thank you for having us. So we have, we used to have three park sites at Yountville Park and they remodeled. And then we opened in late May with four park sites at Yountville Park. And then we moved park site number four to number five at Veterans Park. So we do see a decrease of the number of reservations and the revenue this summer. I think due to the fact that we didn't open until late May for veteran or for Yountville Park, which is a huge. We get a ton of reservations in May. I probably had to turn down about 25 reservations. And then we also implemented a new process this year where we do not double book the park sites. Our public works comes in the morning and they do a really great job of making sure the bathrooms and the parks are beautiful and the trash is empty. However, they don't come back in the afternoon, so somebody's paying $180 for a park site and the trash is full and the bathroom's not clean. It's, it's not, it's not for them. So we decided to try that this year. So I think that's what we saw. But we've had nothing but compliments on Yountville Park. It's amazing there. They love it. The, the trees aren't full grown, so it is pretty hot there. We did allow our renters to bring tents if they wanted to or umbrellas to put up because it is pretty hot at site number three and four. But we did not have any complaints about anything. The barbecues are fantastic. If you have a barbecue there, please do. We've had nothing but just compliments. Everybody just says it's amazing. I've already got seven renters for next summer already. So, yeah. Yeah. Do you have any questions for me or? I'm the one that doesn't really get to say much, so I'm good.
It's all, it's all great news to hear though that, that the programming that we're putting in place is, is really popular and is being, you know, well-received and our parks are being used and taken advantage of like we have invested in them. So.
They, well, there's even, all the sites are pretty much all full for the weekends. There's a lot of drop-ins that just will set up on the grass. If our park sites are full, you drive by, there's blankets, there's little tables, there's parties going on. It's, they're full all the time. The volleyball court's being used pretty much every day. When I drive out, there's probably 25 young adults there playing. So, yeah, they get used a lot.
And it's good to hear that no one's complaining about the hibachis, the old hibachis being removed.
No, they like, they like the new barbecues. Thank you Stacy.
Thank you.
So again, I just really appreciate your time and, and hearing our report. As you mentioned, there was a full, you know, I think it was, it was a lot of pages, report that we put together every summer that was included in the staff reports. We also have copies and then it's available online if anyone's interested. But again, I just really want to thank my amazing team and, you know, it's these four people and then a whole lot of part-time staff that we obviously could not do what we do without. And I think one of them's here, Karen Came, Karen Cole, works in our summer camp and after-school program. And I think, you know, it's a really big part of what we do and Lisa touched on it. But, you know, we, we usually are the first job for a lot of, of teens. And it's something, you know, we're not, we don't just, we actually spend the time and we interview every kid. I interview every kid that applies because I feel like it's a really important part of Parks and Recreation is, is being that first introduction into the, the job market. And so maybe they don't get the job, but at least they filled out the application and made a resume and came in for an interview. You know, by the end of it, especially with summer camp, Carol and I are just glazed over. But, you know, it's a really good experience for them. And so those part-time staff are such a huge part of what we do. But we're also finding some struggles in that and, and really getting the number of staff that we need. So the nation, it's really nationwide, the lifeguard issue. And so, you know, I read articles all the time and Lisa and I are trying, you know, strategizing and meeting with area agencies to try to figure out how to, you know, kind of start building that back up from the ground up. So. But again, we thank you very much for your time tonight and it's been a terrific summer. We feel like it's success, been a success and we hope you do as well. So, thank you.
I also want to call out the flexibility that all of you take and put toward the programming. Very responsive from one year to the next, looking at the data. I know over the years we've talked about, bring us data, bring us data, show us what's working and not working. So we know how to invest smartly and it's showing in a lot of the numbers and the activity, especially the resident activity. So it's really been really positive for us to see those results too. So that's with all of your hard work, that's how it happened. So Vice Mayor?
One of the things I just really wanted to especially call out, and this is not, you know, to take away from anyone else, was this, the Golden Ticket Program. What a home run. I can't believe the just feedback I got from so many of our residents about this. And, you know, they're walking around town with Golden Ticket T-shirts and, you know, they, because sometimes I volunteer at the library. The library was even packed. People coming in and asking about this because the, I guess there was no staff there. It was just a really tremendous program that I've heard some incredible things for. I know we give a lot of stuff to the kids and a lot of attention to that. But I, and I know that Sam's been talking about doing some more, you know, adult, senior adult type stuff. But this was just amazing and I.
Are we, are we at 100, over 100, not yet? 85 or something? Yeah, 75 members. And, and I would say 90% of those, 95% are residents. So.
Yeah. Free can be really attractive.
It's not free.
It's not free, no.
Low cost, I know, low cost.
It's low cost. But, but, you know, and you're definitely, you know, when I floated this idea during the budget that, you know, this, this is going to be a subsidized area, you were very supportive of that. And we're spending that money very wisely, but we're also seeing a great response. So.
That's great.
Yeah, no, it's really tremendous. And just one other thought, kind of along those lines, what I've seen at, you know, basically you see this at, you know, resorts and other pools, maybe some senior exercise in the pool. You may not need, you know, a, a lifeguard for that, but I have seen those things be really popular. We have a lot of women's veterans that might come out because it's right there too. So just food for thought.
Yeah.
But thanks. I mean, I know you put a lot of stuff up here, but I still see a lot of stuff that kind of goes on that didn't even make it on a slide because you're just so involved and, and so great. So, thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Great report. Thank you. No, you don't all have to stay. Wow, don't move so quickly next time. Holy smokes. That was all five of you at once. Okay, I think that's their drop the mic moment right there. I see we don't have any public hearings tonight, but we do have our next item, which is approving the Town of Yountville component of the Napa Countywide Pedestrian Plan. Nathan, welcome.
Great. So, good evening. This evening you have before you the Yountville component of the Napa Countywide Pedestrian Plan. As many of you know, on July 20th, during its regular meeting, the NVTA board adopted a resolution that approved and mitigated negative declaration for the plan as well as approving the plan itself. Now it's the responsibility of every Napa jurisdiction to approve its own component of the plan. A draft of this plan has already been shared with the council during the March 15th meeting. The draft was brought before the council. There were a few recommendations made for minor edits. Those edits have been incorporated into the plan and now you have before you a final version of the plan. I'm incredibly brief. I'm going to turn the time over to Diana Meehan, now a staff member of NVTA, to share a little bit more information about the process that the plan required and some of the policies that it expects.
Great.
Here's Diana.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, council members, Diana Meehan from Napa Valley Transportation Authority. This is a tough act to follow, being the last on the show here. Wild animals, happy people, congressmen. Wow. Nathan told me I was the star of the show tonight. What happened?
We're all stars in our.
No, it's like nothing bad ever happens here in Yountville. And, and the pedestrian plan process was, was exactly that. We, we started this process a little over two years ago. It was late November. We, we started this process a little over two years ago, it was late November, it was early November in 2014 when we kicked it off. And the process was a long one. It was the first ever countywide pedestrian plan. And part of what started this whole process was coming from the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee. Things were beginning to change statewide and, and even federally where funding was concerned, where everything was moving towards active transportation as a whole, as opposed to, you know, separate bikes and peds and transit, that kind of thing, where everything was kind of bundling together into what we call active transportation. So the state adopted a new funding program called the Active Transportation Program. It was also a long time in the making where they, they piled several different programs together into one. So that's where Safe Routes to School funding comes from. That's where bicycle and pedestrian programs and, and project fundings come from. It comes down from the, the federal level through the state to the local region. It's a very competitive program. Sometimes the smaller jurisdictions feel pinned because they don't have the ability to compete with some of the larger jurisdictions who can go out with large amounts of funding and, and hire quality staff to, you know, put together their applications for the program, which, so part of the reason that we put together a plan was to make sure that we have projects and, and are better able to compete for these types of, of funding programs. And we have been successful in Napa County for those programs. One of the early portions of the program, the planning process started with benchmarking. So we went around and we met with each of the local jurisdiction staff and the benchmarking activity is a nationally recognized activity that basically says what you're doing well, what could, you know, use improvement. And it looks like Yountville was already doing a number of the things very well. Yountville was, was the jurisdiction that I used to talk to the other jurisdictions about, if you want to go and see how to do this, then go up to Yountville and take a walk around. So you guys, when it came to the benchmarking, didn't have a whole lot that we had to take a look at. So that part was easy. From that, we took a look at some of the projects that you already had on the books, talked a little bit about some of the ways that those could be improved with some of the newer types of project planning. With pedestrian and bike projects over the last several years have started to really shift and change. It, you know, there's a, a real push for a transition over to these kinds of modes. They reduce air quality problems that we have. We're, we're sort of bound by the state, mandated by the state to do these things. And you guys are already doing a bang-up job. Some of the projects that are in your plan have already been completed, but we wanted to make sure you had credit for those, so those actually went into the plan, too. We went out on walk audits throughout the county. Here in Yountville, we were almost able to walk the entire town because of the size, which was also a benefit because we got to look at things that we ordinarily wouldn't get to see in other jurisdictions, just by virtue of size. Once we, we started piling everything together, we, we came up with a, a existing conditions report. From there, we, we went forward with a draft plan. That plan circulated throughout every, every jurisdiction. The board took a look at the, the mitigated negative declaration, as Nathan said, came forward in March, or May, excuse me, and was adopted by the board in July. You will be the second jurisdiction, if you choose to adopt your version of the, your component of the plan today. CalStog has already done theirs. You'll be the next with everybody else left to follow. I mean, the ultimate goal of the countywide plan was to just make the walking environment better throughout the entire county. And it's a first for Napa County. Once all the plans are adopted, we're going to move forward with an update of the countywide bike plan. It's, it's time to do that. We'll combine the two plans for an overall active transportation plan for the entire county, which will make us even more competitive for the funding. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the process or about your component of the plan.
Hey, thank you.
Sure.
And there've been a couple of us, including former Vice Mayor Hall, who's on the NVTA board for a lot of this process, so we're fairly intimately familiar with how it's gone. But do we have any specific questions?
No, I, I also-
I see you've got some highlighted items there.
Well, I was, you know, interested in the fact that employers of 50 more full-time workers in the Bay Area are required to provide commuter benefits to their employees. And I don't know how many of our hospitality, you know, land, landowners or business owners do that, but anyway, I'm, I'm sure I can find that out.
I can, I can find that out for you. We work in conjunction with Solano Transportation Authority and we have a program called Solano Napa Commuter Information, SNCI, we call them SNIKI. We've been, SNIKI's been, they've been doing this commuter, commuter benefits since 1979. They started it way back in the day. And then this, this program's been funded through 511, through MTC. That funding component is going to disappear in the next fiscal cycle. We also fund that program through TFCA, Transportation Fund for Clean Air, for commuter, our commute challenge, the Napa Commute Challenge, and some of the other programs. We're going to be starting a new van pool program. But they do outreach in, in the region and they go out to the large employers. They have put together a workshop for, for different employers to come and learn about the program. And that program started out as a pilot, it's now been signed into law. So SB 1339, if you have 50 or more employees, you're required to participate in the program. And there are a number of options that you can use to, to do it. Your employees can take the bus, they can bike, they can walk. And, and putting together projects and programs that help improve the environment so they can commute in, in this manner is, is, is a win for everybody, so, yes.
Vice Mayor?
To, to that point, I think that's a, a, a great program. One of the, I think probably the second largest employer in all of Napa County might be the Veterans Home here in Yountville, if I'm, after the county is what I'm assuming is, is number one. Is, it would be great if, sometimes the Veterans Home is an exception to a lot of things that kind of happen, but I think it would be really great if you could maybe make a big educational push there about that. Sometimes they don't really link into all these things as, as well, because they're state property and they run things a little differently.
Sure. They have participated in the, in the commute challenge. I, I think they even had some winners up there this year. We, we made a point of, you know, reaching out whenever somebody, we, we gave away weekly prizes, that we didn't do that before. It was sort of the, the winning team at the end. But this year, just to kind of introduce it and get the news out, and we have a, a public information officer now at our agency, and, and we really did a push to let people know that these options are available to you and, and you should try them. It turns out that several of the folks that are trying, and the, the program has grown. A lot of the employees that are trying, trying alternate commuting are sticking to it. They try it one or two times and they think, this isn't so bad, saves me money, saves me, you know, a headache in terms of commuting and, and they're trying it out. So I am going to ask SNCI to put together another workshop, a regional workshop. I think the first year that we did it, it was like a monsoon that day. And I think five people showed up, five employers showed up, but the word did get out, it did spread around. And they do go around doing outreach, but I'll make sure that they may, make a trip up to the Veterans Home to meet with them and talk to them about the program, because they do have a, a great number of employees up there. Yeah, that's, that's one of the goals, is to help people make the shift when they can. Not, you know, we're not asking that people try it all the time, all five days during the week. Try it once, see how it works for you. Try the bus. And we, we do some pre-transit days, too, that kind of coincide with these, these types of plans and these types of programs, so.
The van, the van pool and everything, I think there might be some synergy.
And I should say, we're, we're starting a new van pool program, I'll just make a plug for that, too. This is kind of a, there was some leftover funding from, you may recall, the Napa Farm Worker Van Pool Program. And there's, there was some federal funding left over from that program. And we're using those dollars to, to make a push towards forming new van pools for employers, employees coming in and, in or out or going out of Napa County. Currently, there are 10 operating van pools all going out of Napa County. There are none coming into Napa County. So that's kind of where we're pushing this one. And also for vans that want to go around in Napa County. Because as you know, our travel behavior study showed that we have a great number of people just traveling in and around the county, going to and from work. So, you know, there's an opportunity for people to start a van pool and be subsidized for the next year to get it going, so. And, and I'm happy to share that information with you, too, so.
Councilor Dorn-
So to piggyback on that, vintage estate is probably the number six employer in the county as well, from what I've read in the latest Business Times. And they have new owners and I think it'd be a huge opportunity, because I head to Napa at 5:30 in the morning, which, to see the amount of cars coming up 29 north, to say that their vans are only going in, out are crazy. But, but, I mean, I think it'd be a good time. We have several new owners of some very large employees, a very large pool of employees in town. And I think what CalStoga tried to do was, was amazing. I think it was a little bit, maybe ahead of its time. I don't know the whole issue, but I, but the whole point is, is it was amazing what they did. So I think it's a good point to reach out to business owners, too.
There are a lot of conversations about, you know, kind of how to manage all of this, especially up here in Napa County where we, we have a, a large number of, of employers with large number of employees, mostly low-wage jobs. And they're having a lot of difficulty, you know, attracting good employees to come up here, if they had some assistance or a way where they could, you know, pull together and van pull in or carpool in, save them some dollars and, and, you know, kind of make their commute a little better. It's real attractive for employees. We've had some contact us to talk about, you know, shuttle programs or finding ways that we can link transit to their places of employment. You know, the, the transit line doesn't run up to these places, so it's cost prohibitive for us to do it. But employers could certainly put together van pools that connect to transit, so we're looking at some options for doing those kinds of things, too. And then again, you know, good, good pedestrian environment where people could make that last mile trip by walking is also of benefit. So these are all the things that we talk about when we, we do the outreach. So I'll definitely make sure that they, they get up here and talk to some of these new employees, employers.
Just one other. I'm sorry. As, as the newest council member, I, I promise I read through at least 45% of that 270 pages.
I think it's 370.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So my percentage went down. But I, I saw reference to all the different bike coalition, the vine, all, all the different. Does that tie into this as well?
A little bit. You know, we don't, we don't have a big advocacy, you know, in the pedestrian world up here. Some of the larger, you know, central Bay Area cities, you know, there's a national organization, America Walks, and there's California Walks, that's, and then there's some local organizations that, that participate in that. But the Napa Valley Transportation Authority Active Transportation Advisory Committee does look at bicycle and pedestrian. We, we, we participate in both. That's their, they're there in advisement for both bikes and peds, too.
But this is just specific-
This, this particular plan is specific to pedestrians, but there, you know, there were others who, you know, because the Vine Trail is really the only countywide link that you could call a countywide pedestrian link, it's, you know, unlike a bike plan where you, you know, you can link the county together, you can travel a much greater distance on a bike than you can by walking. And, and it's, it's very rare that you have a connection through multiple jurisdictions that's a pedestrian connection. But we actually do up here in, in Napa County. We've got the Bay Trail, we've got the Vine Trail, we've got the Ridge Trail. Those are all connected together. And so it is kind of part of this. Those are, you know, more recreational, but the Vine Trail is, is a transportation corridor. And, you know, who knows, there might be some people out there who would walk five miles to work. You know, give up your gym membership. Takes a little while. It takes, I can tell you, it takes, sometimes I walk to work, I live 4.5 miles from work and it takes me just under an hour. But I don't have to go to the gym that day.
Councilor Dorn, back, you have another question?
I did. I had one more note that I had in the Yountville appendix about bike safety. Is the, is the NVTA looking at any sort of bike safety outreach program? Because we have a problem with people on bicycles in town that they don't think that the traffic laws are made for them. And that puts pedestrians at risk also if they're, you know, whizzing by on their bicycle. And so I, I just would like to see some sort of, you know, we have the, our pedestrian crosswalks are very well, you know, signs and it all very, you know, you can tell what it is. But I don't, I, I, you know, there isn't anything, any sign or anything that, to the bicycle community that says the traffic laws are, is there any plans for anything?
The, the current countywide bicycle plan, and this was, you know, a little before my time, and I got here right when they were completing the last update of that plan. And there is a safety component or safety education component in, in the plan. So far, we haven't managed to locate funding to, to finance the, the education component for that plan. So when you're talking about bicycle safety education, it's not only safety education to the cyclist, it's safety education to the motorist, safety education to, you know, anybody using the transportation system. So, and, you know, a lot of, we have a lot of visitors up here, you know, many of whom think it's fine to ride, you know, the wrong way on a sidewalk. So there is an issue, we've seen this issue a lot, especially during the course of, of this plan. We did some counts, you may recall, and the cameras recorded people doing all manner of, you know, crazy things. I actually was up here doing hand counting and saw people doing some pretty silly stuff on bicycles, so, yes. The next update of the bicycle plan will begin sometime early next year and we will be look, looking much more closely at that. One of the, the other things that we've just started to take a look at is just something called Vision Zero. And I don't know if you know, if you, if you've heard of Vision Zero, but it's a movement, a national movement. It started in Sweden back in the early, early, late 90s. And it's, it's a, a national movement towards reducing fatal and severe injuries that happen in, in the transportation environment to zero. So by making particular commitments to building better infrastructure, having safety and education programs. I do know that in the city of Napa, the police department, they do these, I don't, I don't want to call them sting operations, but they are pedestrian and bicycle oriented operations in and around, you know, highly trafficked areas like the Oxbow District, where they sit and they wait and if they see a pedestrian doing something bad or a bicyclist doing something bad, they go and, you know, they make them think they're getting a ticket. But they're not getting a ticket, they're getting a teachable moment about what, how, what could have resulted had this really gone wrong. So, you know, when the police stop you and have a word with you about your behavior, and, you know, there's no accounting for some people's behavior, you know, you can, you can sign it like crazy and some people still sometimes do the wrong thing, but I agree with you. That seems to be a, a large missing component and we are looking at that and, and hope to, you know, have, have that happen in, in the next cycle.
The Vision Zero that you referred to, the League of California Cities just voted to support that effort. And so there's certainly a, at least a statewide, if not larger, awareness about that, that program.
Yeah, and a big component of that program is education. You know, I mean, Kate, Kate Miller and I were talking about, and they use the five Es that you've heard, or the four Es in, in Safe Routes to School, education, engineering, I'm going to, I'm going to forget the other two. Anyway, Kate says they should add a fifth E called empathy. Typically, whatever mode you're using, you tend to lose empathy for whatever the other mode is. If you're, if you're a motorist, that bicyclist is in your way, that pedestrian is slowing you down when they're crossing the street. If you're a bicyclist and that car comes a little bit too close to you, that feels horrible and you don't like it. It's, it's one of these things when we talk about, you know, a more and more, you know, crowded environment out there and, and part of putting together plans like this that take a look at some of the best practices for really putting together a complete street. And a complete street is a street that, that serves all users, all ages and all abilities. So that's kind of, you know, the, one of the stepping stones here with this plan. And with all future plans that, that we're taking a look at or getting ready to do.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Is that it for questions from the council? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
So we have to now, are there any members of the public that wanted to comment about this action that's before us tonight? Seeing none, is there any further discussion or action by the council? I think we're being asked to accept this.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3381, approving the Town Council, Town of Yountville component of the Napa Countywide Pedestrian Plan.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure our friends in CalStoga would be happy to hear that we're on board also.
Yes, they will.
Next, next time we want to be number one.
Number one, right. I was surprised to see we didn't have a newspaper rack ordinance. I was stunned by that. We hardly have any newspaper racks, but. All right, thank you very much, Diana. Appreciate it. Let's see, what do we have next? We are going to staff informational reports. The before mentioned or before contributed to, underpass mural project update.
I'm over here now.
Not really, wow.
Just confusing you.
Just confusing you. So I did go into some detail in the staff report, but I'll just give a quick overview and then happy to answer any questions. So as you remember, the mural contract and design were approved back in August, and staff immediately started the Caltrans approval process. We'd actually started it before that, had all the documents ready to go. It was sent shortly after. There are several steps in the Caltrans process to evaluate the project before we receive permitting. And it became pretty clear that we were not going to meet the October 31st deadline to have the prep work done and all the permitting in place for the artists to start on November 1st, which would have been today, unfortunately. So we, the artists have another project starting in December, and so we knew we had a very short timeline. But we felt like if we could get it done this fall, then that's what we would shoot for. But unfortunately, we did not receive the Caltrans permitting timely. We have been assured there's no outstanding documents, they don't need any other information, it's just making its way through the process. We actually did have the mural itself approved through their Transportation Art Commission. So that piece has been approved. We are still waiting on a contract approval and also then the encroachment permit to actually begin the work. We are talking with the artists and are looking at a March start with hopeful that we will have the mural complete during the Arts in April month here in the Napa Valley, which is actually pretty perfect timing. Our Arts Zip and Stroll event is April 22nd, 2017, and we hope that all of this will nicely coincide. So the plan now is for a March start period for the mural. As we talked about earlier this evening, the Lincoln Theater did present us a check, and with that check and other pledges that we've received, as well as other donations, we have met our $85,000 fundraising goal, which is very exciting. That being said, we're still happy to take other donations. Anything above that amount will go towards the ongoing maintenance of the mural. It will need at least every 12 months, it could be every six to 12 months, maintenance. So we will happy, happy to build up that fund for ongoing maintenance of the mural. If anyone is still interested in donating, they will still receive the benefits of being a sponsor. And just, we've had a really great response from businesses and residents donating towards this project. It's been really fantastic. You may have seen the ads that the Yountville Sun has run consistently, as well as the website, and just some really terrific partnerships, one of which we're still working on with Jessup Sellers and the Good Life Wine Collective. We're going to be doing some events with them and the artists when they're here in town. So this all continue to evolve. The exciting thing, too, is it gives us more time to put into prepping for the project to actually start and to have some really exciting ways for people to watch the project happen. So we're working on some concepts with GoPro cameras and timed, time-lapse photographs and different ways for people to engage whether in person or online as the project unfolds. And the artists are, you know, very excited to come here, very excited to, you know, live in Yountville for a month, of course. So they were a little disappointed as well that we weren't getting started when we had hoped. But we all feel like, instead of really rushing to the finish line, you know, this, this project's been going on for, you know, a long time. So it's okay to wait a few months and get it done correctly. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And of course, as we move into getting closer to the start date, I'll be back with another update for you.
And just a reminder, as you're thinking about March, we do have Yountville Live and Taste of Yountville. So however we need to navigate that to protect the site and do whatever other mitigations, that's fine. But it also could be an entertaining time.
Absolutely. That's how we're looking at it. So there's very little implications for traffic during their installation, so there's no vehicular traffic interruption. It's just pedestrians as they move from the one side to the other. So we are excited, though, of the potential for it to be something as entertaining to the guests that are in town for those events, so.
Any, any questions?
No.
No, Caltrans is actually clearing out the exit there, so that's nice.
Yeah, the grader.
Yeah, thank you. And I think clearly we all support the decision that you made. It's been at least a decade in planning, so you're right, a few months. And I don't think they'd mind hanging out here in March compared to November either.
No, they're excited.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the update. Again, let's also recognize not only the Lincoln Theater, but all the businesses and individuals that have supported this project. I know it seemed like a big number to ask for, especially when the town had already stepped up and supported it significantly with finances. But people really embrace the idea of being a part of the whole project. So that's great to see. And there's more, more to fundraise. Okay. I believe we have three items for our meetings to report on now, assuming there are no other staff informational reports that are not listed on the agenda. Okay. Let's see, Napa County Flood Control. I have a meeting, I don't think there's been a meeting since our last, our last council meeting, so we can skip that. We did have some developments with the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, namely the formal ribbon-cutting opening of the Vine Trail section between Yountville and North Napa. That happened on October 21st. It formalized a practice that had been happening for several months generically, but it was good to see that at least down to the traffic signals that are still being finalized down in North Napa, we have another six miles or so to give us at least a seven-mile segment. And I can stop hearing from the mayor of Napa about our one mile that goes nowhere. So now they have the dead end in Napa.
I have one of those. Are you finished with NVTA?
NVTA, yes, go ahead.
One of the, the other items that was brought to our attention was the on-time report in how the regional shuttles were doing. And I just wanted to mention that in regards to Yountville, we virtually had no change from last year to the year before. There were some pretty big decreases. Vinego in Napa had a 15% decrease. American Canyon Transit, their little shuttle, had a 31% decrease. And of all these shuttles, there's Vinego, CalStoga, St. Helena, Yountville, American Canyon. We have the highest numbers of anybody. Ours, last year, total ridership was 6,700, and this year was 6,500 out of all those. So I thought that was pretty noteworthy. One other statistic that they, I just wanted to mention that they collect all the data, because every time you get on, they write, write it down. But our residents ride it, constitute 82% of the ridership, and the visitors 18%.
And that's even with the frustrating maintenance issues we've had with our trolleys.
Yeah, if you could get up that first step, the numbers could double.
Yeah. Okay, next up, I have just a few announcements and reports. One, I was, it was my pleasure to represent the council to present a proclamation to Senator Lois Wolk at a special luncheon that was held, recognizing her as her public service career comes to a close as she is leaving office this year. And so I presented that on behalf of all of us and appreciated her service. Also, the ongoing conversations with the Napa Unified School District are becoming, you know, taking a very critical step this week. On Thursday, November 3rd at 6:00 PM, there will be a study session followed by the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for the district. And they will be receiving a recommendation from the district staff, supported by Superintendent Sweeney, to recommend that the Stonebridge Elementary Schools stays on their existing Carnero site and is rebuilt a safe distance away from the recently discovered seismic fault line and the PG&E gas line that created some significant concern after the earthquake two years ago. Part of the recommendation is to commit to Yountville Elementary School remaining a standalone elementary school here in the community. And the district also committed to working with a local advisory committee, similar to the advisory committee I've been serving on with stakeholders from Yountville and Stonebridge and the district. And we're going to focus specifically on ways to generate additional enrollment numbers and also show a very long-term future for Yountville as a, as a school here in our community. So that's a critical piece to the recommendation that's going to be given to the board. If anyone wants to make public statements to the Board of Trustees, they're welcome to go to that meeting down at the district offices in Napa. Again, Thursday, November 3rd, starting at 6:00 PM. They're also encouraged to reach out to their trustees, either in their own district or all of them, frankly, to let them know what their thoughts are about that plan. Their decision is expected not on the 3rd, but on their next meeting of November 17th. So they're expected to receive the recommendation, ask questions, receive public comment, and then on the 17th, they're expecting a final vote on that recommendation. A reminder for a couple upcoming events. Wednesday, November 9th will be the Celebrity Chef's Luncheon, which is always a great opportunity for residents and part of our business community to go recognize our veteran residents. That'll be, again, two lunch services led, once again, for the last decade by Chef Bob Hurley and our Chamber of Commerce. Then there will be some Veterans Day ceremonies on Friday, November 11th, and actually through the whole weekend at the Veterans Home. Specifically, there will be a Roots of Peace presentation in the Memorial Grove, followed by the traditional Armistice toast at 11:11 AM at the Dining Commons. And I believe some of our state officials are going to be present for that toast. The last reminder I wanted to give was that we're on the verge of the Napa Valley Film Festival. So you're going to see a lot of activity in Yountville, which is a major screening and activities hub. That's going to be November 8th through the 13th. The Yountville Community Center and the Lincoln Theater will both be used as screening venues. And the Lincoln Theater is a, the primary, I would say, location for a lot of the additional dinners and other activities other than just film. So I know they're looking for volunteers. I know there have been a lot of folks that have volunteered in the past to support the Yountville screenings, so feel free to do that again this year.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to add on the Film Festival as part of our sponsor, venue sponsorship for the community center, Tuesday is a, Tuesday, the 8th is a, all the films that will be shown at the community center, there's a discount program for residents for $5. So all of our residents can look on our website or the Film Festival, but it's certainly a great opportunity, a low-cost opportunity to experience the Film Festival here at the community center. And again, as part of our partnership with the Film Festival.
And this is the first year they've, they're starting screenings Tuesday morning.
That's correct.
So they're screening films throughout the day on Tuesday. Normally, four films throughout the day.
Community Center.
So again, look on their website or...
You can do one, you can do all four.
That's right. Those are my reports and announcements. Are there any others from council? Any other business we have tonight? We had our closed session before. Seeing no other business, I will accept a motion for adjournment to our next meeting of Tuesday, November 15th at 6:00.
So moved?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you all very much.